Next item.
Discussion items, I-Ready Benchmark Assessment, Ms. Hilda Rani.
Hello again, good evening, President Thorpe, Board Trustees, Dr. Maleko. I'm up here today to give you a brief overview of the I-Ready Assessment Pilot that we recently completed. With me, I have one of our middle school instructional coaches, Ms. Fathmi Badun. He'll be giving you a firsthand experience of what I-Ready is like in the classroom. So, the goal of tonight's short presentation is really to provide you with an overview of I-Ready Assessment, our reasons for recommending the change in assessment, and how it can best be implemented in the future. Both coaches, like I mentioned here, have experience with the, oh, Fathmi is not with us, so, or Rana is not with us, yes, but have experience with the assessment, and they know firsthand how it benefits our students. So, I'd like to start off with a brief history, because this is not a change we take lightly. Changing one of our district assessments is something that we feel is important, because we've been looking at NWA now for close to nine years. And like with all, you know, positive instructional practices, we know that we need to reevaluate. Is this still the best fit for our students, for our staff? And so, about two years ago, back when Dr. Patterson was still here, the Assessment Committee and the leadership at the district level felt that they needed to evaluate what was in practice, what still fit, and what needed to go forward. So, six schools participated in the I-Ready Assessment Pilot back in 21, 22. We felt that we needed to collect additional data from the field test, and so we continued that pilot into the school year. Where an additional 16 schools joined along in both reading and in math. In the winter, a few months back, we had Curriculum Associates come out and present to not only the Assessment Committee, but to Instructional Cabinet to answer any questions they might have, and provide a nice summary of the reports that we can gain from the data that we collect. From there, our district committees, as well as our administrators, were able to explore the assessment, and all voted in favor of moving forward. Here you can see, as part of that piloting process, we really want to collect some data. And so, I reached out to our piloting teachers. We had close to 100 of them, from kindergarten through eighth grade, and 80% of them felt that I-Ready would be the best assessment moving forward for our students. Most interesting was our students, because I really wanted to get their firsthand experience. They were the ones taking this assessment twice a year. And so, we reached out to them, and 70% of the 1,500 kids that completed the survey felt that I-Ready was something that they enjoyed doing. It was not an assessment where they felt like it would felt like a test. They enjoyed having that snapshot of where they were, the immediate feedback, the engaging platform. I mean, I have feedback from all of them, and I really talked to them, and through classroom observations, got a nice taste of what they felt was best for them. Our elementary administrators, all but one felt that, moving forward, I-Ready would be the best choice. Our middle school administrators were unanimous in support of this assessment platform. The Assessment Committee, I got to hear several presentations on the, from our, from the vendor, as well as within the group, and where we answered their questions in terms of accommodations, and what it would look like, and how we could use the data, and they were in favor. And then finally, our district leadership. So, not only did Instructional Cabinet, but Curriculum Council were both unanimous in moving forward with this. So, what makes I-Ready so special? Why are we even talking about this today? There are many vendors out there, and we were very cognizant about the fact that we wanted to choose an assessment platform that stayed innovative, that always listened to our feedback. And that was something that really stood out about the Curriculum Associates team. They believe in ongoing professional development. So, not only will they train our staff with the initial onset of taking on the platform, the assessment, but they'll continue to do so throughout our contract, one year, two years, three years into it. The assessment is aligned to our standards. So, what we are teaching in the classroom, and those essential standards that we know are aligned to the Common Core, that's what we'll see on the test. So, nothing's out of place, nothing's done, you know, without needed. The results are immediate, and the feedback is presented in a way where students and teachers know what they were, so when a student finishes their test, they know what they received on the fall test, they know what they got on the spring test, and they can see that growth of how they went up, and what they need to focus on. So, it's very specific and targeted. The reports are user-friendly, not only to staff, but to administrators and to families. They're very clear-cut, and I know Fathmi will discuss what those look like firsthand experience there. The reports focusing on instructional steps and strategies. And I thought this was something that really set I-Ready apart from its, you know, from its, from other platforms out there, that when we get the data points, not only are we getting, because it's a criterion reference test, we get criterion data, we get norm reference data, we get Lexile, as well as grade level reports, and predictability on other assessments known as M-Step. So, all of that is available to us, and it's really up to the teacher and the administrative team on how they want to use that information. And then I mentioned the professional development, and I think, I'm trying to think, I forgot anything else. So, a little bit about that PD piece, because I think that really, for me, coming from the Assessment Department, this is what's going to set us up for success. We need to make sure that all of our stakeholders, that means our teachers, our administrators, our students, of course, and our families, understand the change in the assessment, and what it's going to look like, in terms of the platform, when we'll be giving it, that fall and spring window will stay the same, and then how we can best prepare. Because I feel like that preparedness and having that knowledge on the onset will prepare us for long-term success. And so, what I wanted to do here was kind of give a, or part, this is how I understood this, and I felt this really gave us that broad picture of, starting off, of course, starting with our teachers, whether it be, you know, in August, we'll be working with the team from Curriculum Associates. They'll send in all of their facilitators, given the size of our district, to make sure that everyone is understanding what it is we're assessing, and how we're going to get there. We'll continue with ongoing coaching, so working with our instructional coaches, working with, you know, instructional leadership here at Central Office, of course, with the CA team, and with our Assessment Office, to give that ongoing PD, to make sure that everybody, once we do give the test, what do we do with those scores? Because I think that's the biggest impact there. Our building administrators will receive training in terms of what to do with the data, and how to make informed instructional decisions, and to support their teachers along the way. And of course, most importantly, our families. Will the families, will do parent meetings, parent-teacher conferences, and making sure they have those resources available to them, so that they understand what, you know, Curriculum Associates, and what the I-Ready platform can offer them. So, what I'd like to do now is turn the platform over to Badun here, and she can give you an idea of what I-Ready is like.
Thank you. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm Fathmi Badun. I am one of the math instructional coaches in the district right now. Currently, I'm at Woodworth. What's special about what we did, we also piloted ELA, and my ELA counterpart is not here right now, so I'm just going to speak directly to the math first. I came in as a teacher, using the I-Ready Curriculum Resource, which gave me the boots-on-the-ground experience that teachers need with the professional development and the assessment. One of the best things about the assessment is how easy it is for teachers. It really protects our instructional time, given that we can really make decisions based on the information provided. So, it gives us a list of individualized can-dos for each student, how we can help them grow, areas that we can accelerate their learning without going backwards. We're always moving forward with this platform. So, it, like Hilda said, it provides several areas of support for teachers, parents, students. I want to talk about the parents, because I'm also a parent in the district. The parent reports are so simple. It gives, parents are always asking us, what's the next thing I can do? Well, with that report, it literally lists them one by one for you. This is where your child needs to grow, and this is where they're growing. They can accelerate from here, based on that. One of the other things, the diagnostic aligns, we already use the I-Ready Curriculum Resource, so aligns perfectly with it. For ELA, it aligns with the Amplify Resource. So, there's really nothing that's too difficult, as far as alignment goes. It is, sorry, I'm trying to get through the ELA stuff too, since she wasn't able to make it. As Hilda said, teachers have immediate access to tools and instruction, and these lessons are tied together, and they really tie in all of the essential standards that we, as a district have, are moving forward to mastery. So, we can make sure that we structure the decisions we're making, based on the data provided in all these reports.
I'm glad you mentioned the tools for instruction. So, tools for instruction is something that, as, once a student completes the diagnostic, a teacher will instantly get groupings of how students achieve or perform, based on the essential standards that they were tested on. And from there, the teacher can pull her small group, she can do whole groups, she can do individualized instruction, based on what that student needs. So, it automatically gives you the mini lesson right there and then, they can generate that lesson. So, if you're a brand-new teacher, and you're not sure, okay, I've got these five kids, this is what they need, boom, I've got that lesson right there, and I can form that with them, and it's.
And they are tangible, so it's on-screen lessons and off-screen. So, if a teacher wants had small group instruction, and they've got support within their classroom, you can hand off, hey, here's the data, here's the assessment, here's the lesson that we would like these, this group of students to focus on.
Okay, and then we have Ms. Rana Allowee, one of our middle school ELA coaches here. Would you like to?
Hi, thank you. Good evening, members. Thank you. Oh, thank you, sorry. Good evening, Dr. Maleko, the board members. So, coming in with fresh eyes, coming from the ELA department, we never worked with I-Ready before. So, coming in with this new perspective, I was elated to discover all of the plethora of resources, and the accessibility of reports, and the different kinds of reports, both from the teacher, both at the teacher level and administration. I mean, you can get your hands on all different kinds of reports, from different perspective, in different layers. It was phenomenal. It was user-friendly, which is awesome. Very user-friendly, very clean-looking site, very easy to, we were teaching each other very quickly, because it was very easy to use. I appreciated the teacher tools, the instructional targeted lessons for students, that the program already groups for the teachers. That comes with the diagnostic. I don't know if you guys already touched upon that, but it's phenomenal, yeah, it's phenomenal. So, I was, I was really giddy, because it was new to me, and it was just a wonderful program. It assigns buddies and small groups, which makes it a little bit easier for the teacher to do small group instructions, once that, once that's set up. And having already identified in the district, and we've worked on essential standards, each teacher team has, you know, identified their essential standards, we can confidently say that I-Ready aligns with that, and assesses those essential standards. And honestly, it's a one-stop shop for deep, well-organized, Common Core data collection, and differentiated instruction for both literacy and math. So, we were very excited for this program. Thank you.
Comments? Trustee Watts.
I have a list of questions.
Please go right ahead.
Please be patient. So, you were saying the training will happen in August. How long is that training going to be? I can hear teachers starting to.
Oh, yeah, and I, I understand that. Once I know we're moving forward with this, I will work with the Curriculum Associates facilitators, and they reassured me, because I was a little, one of my initial questions, given the size of our district, the number of teachers we have in classrooms, they said they would not send one or two, they would send in a whole fleet of facilitators to work with us, to develop that plan, and to get them up to speed and ready to go.
So, is that going to be in addition to the PD before school starts, or is that going to be in replacement of some of the PD?
Well, that will have to work out, I guess, once we have that calendar, and we work with the building teams, I said, whether we have to group buildings together to get that to them, but I will, I agree with you. I can understand that worry.
So, then the other part was, the amount of time that we set aside for NWEA. Is this going to be the same amount of time, same amount of time, less?
Okay, so, it, in working with, from what I've understand, it is comparable, based on the piloting teachers. Now, when I talk to Curriculum Associates, and from what I've seen, there is a way to reduce that time, and we need to tighten, yeah, yeah, exactly. We need to learn how to tighten that up, because we should not be spending our time on the assessment, we should be spending our time on the instruction. Take that data and move forward.
So, then the other part where, this is not going to replace M-Step, correct? Like, this is.
No, so, I'm glad you brought that up, yeah.
Wanted to make sure parents knew that.
Yeah, so, MDE requires that we offer a benchmark assessment, so this would be our fall and spring assessment, that we would be reimbursed on, per the guidelines of.
Correct. Then the other part is, would it, I guess, and I don't think it would, but when, say for instance, the elementary report card comes home, and it's a different language for me, I don't, I don't even know. So, is there anything, possibly down the line as well, is there anything current that connects, connects the testing to the report card, in terms of explanations? Do you see what I'm saying?
I do. So, the language on the I-Ready report, ladies, you can confirm this with me, is tied to our essential standards, it's to those targets. So, our goal, that, coming soon, this is in discussion, and I know district leadership has brought this up, we are looking at possibly working on the report card. We want all of that to match what's on our essential standards, and what we are identifying in those targets.
Now, going back to the math, so that's specific, is there a possibility that it would, if it's spinning out this report, right, and it says, hey, this is what your math score is, does it then connect to ZERN, or does it connect to Eureka Math? What sort of, does it carry over at all, or is there nothing that says, hey, this child is, is, this is where they're growing, maybe they need X amount?
That's a great question. It has its own, because we use it as a curriculum resource in middle school. I don't, I can't speak to ZERN or Eureka Math yet, but I know that it breaks it down by standard either way, so I, I'm not sure exactly how, it's not just going to say number sense. The I-Ready Diagnostic will go back and say, okay, they excel in multiplication, but they're struggling in division. So, it breaks each strand down, not just, it's by skill set, not just by strand.
Okay. So, then, as, as a parent, if I'm getting the report, and like any parent, we go straight to the, the number that's not the best, right? Because that's where, like, this is where the growth needs to happen. So, as a parent, what would I get to support my student at home?
You do get a report, and that report will say the can-do and the next steps. Your child can already do these tasks, they're above grade level, at grade level, and the next steps they need to take is these skills, adding and subtracting, whatever it is, two-digit multiplication, but they're very specific and direct. What I like about the report is very precise. It's not as general as number sense.
Yes. And then, then I can't, then one more, or two more, I guess. The reading in the ELA, I said I had a list of questions.
That's okay, that's why we're here.
If they can give you a grouping of students that says, this is their reading, right, so it compilates that for you, does it also give then connections to books, and says, these are the books that we would recommend, based on this reading level?
I have not seen a list of books, but it does give a Lexile score.
Okay.
Yes, so it does give a Lexile score, that obviously you can go and find books that match that Lexile score.
So, that way, if they go to Media Center, or they're going, you know, purchasing books for their child.
Right. And then, two things. To me, it sounds like it's saving teachers time for lesson planning.
It is.
Right? So, then, the big question is, what is the cost compared to NWEA?
So, working with the vendor, we are trying to negotiate that cost, to bring it as close to NWA as possible. We are going to be reimbursed $1,200 per student, I believe, through, from MDE to the Benchmark Grant, so that helps.
Okay.
So, well, stay tuned, we're working on that.
And that isn't the end of my list, thank you.
Thank you for those questions.
Sure?
I'm positive, yes, I crossed it all out.
Trustee McDonald.
Well, she hit on a few of mine, but I really think, from what, and I love your excitement about this, this.
It was easy to convince them to come tonight, I'll be honest with you. They were like, no, we want to share what's working.
It seems like it has so many advantages, but one thing that struck me that you said was the students like it too, because it's not like taking a test. How does it differ from taking a test? What is that like?
Okay, a couple of highlights from their feedback, the engagement of it, it doesn't look like a test. It is very colorful, but yet simplistic in terms of what the platform looks like, right? Very user, user experience is very friendly, there are tools on there that they're used to using.
There's a brain break.
I was just going to say, there are brain breaks. So, what they do is they group the assessment questions, based on the theme or the topic. Once a group is done, they give them a three-minute, is it three minutes? Two-to-three-minute brain break, where it's like a little game activity that they can play, and then they return them back to the assessment. Just a kind of reset. With the older students, the teacher could have the ability to change that brain break to just kind of like a relaxation break, or like a breathe break, if you want to say, a calming break. But they've really given a lot of thought to making it a more positive experience for students, and not so.
So tense.
Yes, yes, and that's truly what they said to me, it didn't feel like a test. I'm like, okay, that's good then. I would like to share real quick, and I promised I would. One of our fifth-grade teachers that did give the assessment, sent me an email this morning, and he said, the administering the diagnostic is very user-friendly. The diagnostic provides a next steps component for teachers and parents to assist with helping the student achieve success with a particular strategy or skill. The next step section comes with a complete, complete with instructions, in many cases, a graphic organizer to assist with the delivery of the mini lesson. So, it's not just a couple, like, do this, this, and this. It's a full lesson that we can give to our teachers. So, really, and it aligns with ELA Benchmark, with our Amplify, with our Ready Common Core, and with Eureka Math, so.
And that targeted instructional lesson that we're talking about, doesn't have to be given at screen time. I mean, they can print it and do it in class, so that's, that's also a plus, it's not 100% screen.
Yeah, you're interacting with the student.
It seems like, too, with the information that the parents are getting from the report, that they can help with the scaffolding that the student needs in the correct order, so they're not, they know exactly what they need at this point to get them to the next step.
At this point in time, exactly. And it gives you not only their proficiency, but it'll give them their stretch growth. So, we're looking at, this is where we'd like them to be in six months, and then a year from now. So, really trying to get that, you know, that acceleration piece that we're really advocating for.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Yes, thank you. So, your, the reports, the results. So, the number-one complaint about this program is the teacher or the parents don't have what this child, their student was tested on. So, when you say, here's the growth, so if somebody's failing, or somebody's behind, where do we go from there?
Well, it'll give them what they, what they can do. Of course, you always have, you know, focusing on the positive, but then it'll give you those next steps on what we can take them to the next level. So, whether they're six months behind, a year behind, two years behind, let's say, we're really looking at that strategic plan that we would work with the teacher and the parents to get them moving forward. And it would give them those specific targets that they would have to focus on.
Our students, oh, God, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I'm sorry. A teacher can look up one of her essential standards that, you know, that PLC is working on, for instance, and once she pulls up that strand or that skill, then a list of students will be grouped, from mastery to almost mastered, or not mastered. And so, she knows exactly how to group her kids, and she can work with them to, you know, to work towards mastery. And that lesson is there, and we have resources, of course, that we're using in the classroom, but this is an additional intervention piece that is also available for them.
Another tool in our arsenal, right? We got to have.
Sure, sure.
And for the parents, though, it does, just by, not just by standard, it will break that standard down by skill set, which I love seeing for my kids, because it gives me an idea, okay, they can do addition and repeated addition, but they still are struggling with connecting that to multiplication, that's what I'm going to work on. So, it will give you a step-by-step of which skills they're struggling with.
How does this serve our students with IEPs?
There are accommodations on there as well, we can turn on and off, of course, as needed, and so we have full control for our EL population, as well as special education. That was something that we were, we, Assessment Committee brought that up right away, and we met with the vendor, and they reassured us.
And are you aware of any research that's out there?
Yes, there's, this is actually a well-researched assessment. It's been around now for close to 15 years, in terms for the company, and they've been collecting data across the country, with over, you know, 40 million users across the US, so this is not just a brand-new, you know, assessment that's out there. So, it's been pretty well-established, and we have quite a few districts actually in the state that are using this as well.
I saw some of those districts in this report, including Oakland Public Schools and a few others. Can you send me the link on that?
Of course, yeah, of all of that, I can definitely.
Because what I'm seeing here is some of the, I mean, a lot of the institutions are saying, you know, extra research, so, but there's a lot of opinions out there. So, some of the districts, and some of the southern states that are, you know, like, get so excited about this program, you know, it's something new, then a year later, it's a completely different.
You know, I agree, no, we definitely want something that's been vetted. The resources that Curriculum System has put together through Ready are all green on ad reports, so this is not a just spur-of-the-moment type.
Sure, no, no, no.
We want to make sure, I agree with, we want to, but yeah, I will definitely share that research.
You got to, you got to, where I'm sitting here, you know, like, every few years, we get a reading program, we get a math program.
I agree.
New assessment.
Sure.
I know it's coming up, probably next couple of years, you know, what's the next reading program, somebody's going to try to sell us, and we get really excited about it, then we look and say, what, what the heck, what happened here? So, one last question, Trustee Watts touched on it, costs, so we're already into this, did we put up an investment yet?
No, so, up to now, we've been piloting for the assessment. At the middle school, that is their adopted math resource, and their, they have that, and then you believe you just proved an additional three-year renewal on that for the middle school.
Okay.
But this is looking at a K8 assessment there.
Okay. You mentioned something that would be reimbursed. I'm looking at the cost involved here, the report that was presented to us, it's a good chunk of money. What do you see, like, we said we will be reimbursed.
Correct, we get $1,200 per student, that comes back from Michigan Department of Ed.
Okay. I'm good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we had just touched on the fact that middle school math has been using this for how many years?
This is our fifth. We just, you guys just renewed for another three.
And that's the only one that we've been using it on, at a, at a large scale, besides the pilots?
Correct, correct. We do have some buildings that have been using their title funds, and have been using that with success. Personally speaking, I know, this is Raj and I, when we were at Maples many, many years. So, this is not a new vendor, a new company. Their resources have been valuable in terms of just aligning to our essential standards, and what we think is best practice for our students as a valuable resource.
Well, and as you mentioned, I mean, it seems to be across the board, people prefer this to the existing one.
The excitement is, I mean, honestly, when you, you see it, like, yeah, no, this is something we believe in, so.
What, so what are the next steps then, for us to be able to move forward with this in the fall?
We would get the price, and we would hope to bring it to the board, either.
For me, I would hope, yeah, I will definitely, once I, you know, any other questions from you, but then we would speak with the vendor, get that price negotiated to where we'd like it, and we'll move forward from there.
Any additional questions for the board? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Board of Education Business, acknowledgements of correspondence.
Trying to make sure every time I'm getting an email, I'm including everyone in the response, even if they're the ones that appear to just be coming to me, because you never know if you're all getting that same email. I know there's been a couple that have been forwarded to me. Next.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports. I can start. Policy met earlier today. We looked over two items. The first one was the athletic eligibility. There was a request to perhaps change the policy. We were given one draft of the GPA policy for athletics. We have asked them to come back with perhaps a scenario that would maintain the current GPA, but perhaps would give us some latitude for one-time exemptions. So, we're going to wait until the committee comes back, not the committee, I'm sorry, with Mr. Martin and Mr. Silver with that. And the second was dress code, it's not a policy, it was just more of a document, and trying to get feedback from some students and principals at every building level, to see how we could change some of the language that was less directed toward some of our female students. So, they're going to look at a couple, we're going to add, change a couple of the words around, but we will, it does not require a vote, but we will pass it around to the board, and we can look at that as well.
Anything else?
No, those were the two.
All right. Finance Committee met a little bit earlier. Trustee Moses was going to help you report out for that.
Yeah, the Finance Committee met, we discussed some of the millage renewals for the operational millage, as well as the old harmless millage. We also discussed the potential future bond issue, and Tom will expand on that. We also reviewed the first step of the energy bond that was approved last meeting, and reviewed also the Moody updates, as far as the credit rating for the district, after getting that energy bond. And then we took a look also at the first budget amendment for this year. And Tom, if you want to shed more light on the millage renewals.
Yep, and majority of the meeting was talked about the millages that we do for operating, that, and all the board will get a little primer about public education and the millages, how we levy them, how they came to be. It's eight pages, so it's gonna be a while to read and to comprehend, but that'll be given out in board briefs. We covered over that a little bit today, showing the graphs. Dr. Malak also requested at the next board meeting for me to actually do a short presentation on the millages for the public, so they understand. It's a complex issue, you know, we've been kind of maintaining our military rate for quite some time, but with state law changes and our bond issues coming off the books in the past from the 2002 bond issue, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a hybrid rate that we are seeing now, that we do need to spend some time to make sure the public understands where we're at, and what's gonna be the next steps on any future millages that we bring to the public. And our 30-year infrastructure plan will also have an impact on that. So we just gotta be full disclosure, so we're not doing it piecemeal, but they know the long-range planning of what our millages rate are, where they need to be, and how that incorporates into the whole infrastructure process that we're discussing.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Was it a question for Mr.?
Oh, no, no, no.
All right. Thank you very much. Trustee Pellicoff.
Okay, I'll, I'll do my report on the City Relations Committee meeting we had last week. Unfortunately, the mayor couldn't attend because he was unwell at the last minute. So the meeting was a little more abbreviated because we only had his Chief of Staff and a couple other individuals there, so we couldn't get into in-depth, and a lot of the conversation was had just to introduce the topics. And I suggested that be, so that we could have a better, more in-depth sharing of ideas, that I was going to try to reschedule another meeting with a broader, with the Police Chief and the Mayor and some other department heads who were necessary to fill in the blanks on a lot of these topics within the next eight weeks before school ends. So I'm going to, it's logistically a difficult task to get everybody from different entities together, but I'm gonna try to pull it off again. But we, we did talk about the anti-bullying. I had to explain because the, this administration group is new and unfamiliar with what we've done in the past. So I had to explain to them what we did originally when we started the anti-bullying campaign. And so a lot of the conversation was just about what would be the city's part of participation and what were we looking for. So that didn't go very far in the conversation, because we needed more from, commitment from the mayor's end. But, but they were interested in, in what we were doing, and we talked about Care to the Core and other things. We also talked about our electrical buses and the infrastructure that was going to be needed for charging stations, potentially throughout the city besides the ones that we were going to install, and could we share opportunities? They are looking at, the city's looking at installing charging stations, but they suspect it wouldn't be at the same voltage that we would need for school buses, but we were gonna have the conversation about what we could collaborate on, and either services or costs somewhere down the road. We touched upon the subject of recycling and green schools. The city is also struggling with recycling program. I had already heard this from the mayor at our Federation Neighborhood Association's meeting, that recycling's become a problem again in the community, and that most of our recycling is being turned back at the station because it's contaminated. And they are looking to the school district to help support an educational component again, which we used to do through City Beautiful Commission, but they're hoping that we can help partner with them in order to turn around the lack of proper recycling that's going on in the city. Whether or not they're in the process of renegotiating their garbage contract right now, so they're not even sure what their end is gonna look like, so we're gonna have to pretty much stay with what we have at this point in time. The snow shoveling project, is Mr. Martin still here? Because they have a request, which will probably involve you again. We did, we did touch, start to touch upon it, and then found out that the city is looking to create a dashboard, okay, you have, you've had conversations with Alia, for volunteerism. And so they're gonna need our help in funneling the message to the students and getting students to go, and this is just in its infancy of development, but, but you will be hearing from them, I'm sure. And they congratulated you on your yeoman's job for running the student volunteer program so far, and they thanked you for it. Luckily, we didn't have a heavy snow cycle for the winter. We talked about the driver's education update. Unfortunately, the Police Chief wasn't there for us to share with what we have, but Dr. Malak can elaborate upon the partnership that we have with the Driver's Education School, who is going to be providing Driver's Ed for our students at a lower cost than what they are currently doing, and hopefully, we can find a way to help subsidize that through what I would call scholarships, to, to help get driver's education back into the school scenario, so that it's, it's, it's a well-rounded experience for the students, instead of going to pay for Driver's Ed that doesn't really get the quality of education out there that we would like to see with our drivers. We know traffic issues are a huge problem in not only our city, but across the state with poor driving habits across the board. We talked, we touched upon, they had just had a meeting with Eagle about the South End and air quality, and we had just a quick conversation about that, as well as the fielding study, because the mayor wasn't there, and it was really, we, we would like to present more information to the city administration as a whole. And we did, we did once again touch base on, the city has an ordinance about engineer certification that is hindering our ability to have all of our buildings well-staffed because of, it's an impediment, and we continue to ask if they can help. It's their personal ordinance, it's not, I believe, correct, Mr. Wall. And we are, are, we would like to see, see it, the wording of it changed so that we can be sure that we can fully staff with the employees that we have at each of the buildings, qualified engineers that may not have the qualifications that the city ordinance is requesting, because it's, it's, I guess it's an unnecessary addition, and, and it's impeding our ability to hire and make sure we always have people at the ready in case of a substitute's needed. So, we real quickly talked about, but they, they didn't have enough knowledge, the rec department is undergoing some transitions right now with their new director, so we, we tried to kind of field out what's going on for summer programs through the city, and what overlaps and what we could contribute and what, but they're in the process of relooking at everything they're doing through their rec program, so we didn't get very far with that. And that's about the end of that meeting. Did I miss anything?
Covered it well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you much. One additional committee that I will bring up is, notifications went out to parents in the last week or so regarding the Strategic Planning Committee. We know that that is an item that's gonna be coming up this year, and Ms. Faraj is looking for two members of the board to serve on that. I don't have the dates in front of me, but I know it's three evenings that are expected, with the first one being later this month, I believe. So, if we can get two volunteers from the board that are interested in that, you could just reach out to Ms. Faraj directly and let her know if you're interested in that. Next item?
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
I will mention, 'cause I forgot, in correspondence, I got a nice thank you from Snow Elementary School after reading to them last month. March is Reading Month, is a fun time, getting a chance to get out there and see the kids, interact with them a little bit, and just have some fun. So it's always good to get a chance to get back into the buildings. And I always remind all of them to let us know when they've got special events, so that we have a chance to see if it can fit on our schedule, and we can stop in and say hello to them. Any additional commentary from any other board members?
I just wanted to say, I did join for part of the Care to the Core Day, and so I was able to do some, some painting of rocks at Lori Middle School, and so the students were very accommodating and letting somebody come and join their group that they were, was a stranger. So I just wanna say thank you. The, the kids were great, and it was a great day, and I think, and this was mentioned, I think, perhaps last year, but going forward, if that's something that, and I don't know if this might be in connection to perhaps like an anti-bullying or anti-hate campaign, but if we could do more of that, and I feel like there's opportunity there to make a greater connection with our students, perhaps at the beginning of the school year, and then maybe we can do like an end of the year, but I think it was, it was a great time with the students. So I just wanna thank them and all of the staff for changing their day and their routine for allowing us to come through and being part of their day for just a, a small snippet, so.
Thank you. Next item?
Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items.
Trustee Barry.
Dr. Malak, if we can get a report of our buses inventory? Last time I seen that, I know probably the inventory went down since last we've seen it, and maybe with their report, you know, the age of each bus and the type of bus it is. Thank you. The other thing is, we just mentioned, with iReady, we've been using it for the last five years, at sixth through eighth grade. If we can get, I mean, I can probably look it up, but if we can get the report on assessment scores in middle school, last five years. I don't know what that means, what do you mean?
Curriculum Associates, they have three components. They have instruction fees, they have the assessment, and they have MyPath. What we have purchased is the curriculum resource, which is used in sixth through eighth. We are purchasing the assessment, but they both support each other.
So at this point, we don't have the assessment?
We do have iReady, MyPath, but we really don't take the assessment and administer to every student, because we don't wanna spend too much time on assessment, so we wouldn't have the data in middle school.
So what I'm hearing is that what we just approved, I'm sure we made an investment five years ago.
Curriculum resources.
So for the assessment, it's an additional?
Yeah, it is. It's replacing iReady.
Wow, okay.
I'm sorry, it's replacing NWEA.
So, yeah, the assessment we'd have for the middle school would still be through NWEA, even though we were using resources for iReady?
Yeah, that's what we're doing currently. We're using NWA because that was the district adopted assessment.
Okay.
But since curriculum associates, curriculum resources rated the highest, when we were ready to adopt a new curriculum resource, we adopted, it used to be called Ready, but now they call it iReady Instruction. So they do have three paths. They have the assessment, they have MyPath, which is equivalent to Zern that you asked about, and they have the assessment, so instruction, MyPath, and assessment.
Sure. So would you want assessment data for the middle school end?
I was just hoping I would get more positive results from what I've been seeing, but that's okay, it's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for explaining that.
But we did purchase MyPath, which includes the assessment, but we don't do it, because we don't wanna throw more assessments on the students.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to the request about the buses, can we also then include the buses that are in the pipeline to be brought into the district? Thanks. One that I had down, Dr. Malak, is if you can give us information on the graduate intervention specialist, what their role is when they become active with a student, just to give us a better understanding of, of the role.
Sure.
Any additional requests for information or agenda items? All right, next item?
Future meeting dates, Monday, April 17th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, April 17th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. And Monday, May 8th, 2023, P-12 Board Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom.
Before we adjourn, going just further out on the calendar, normally, we would have a college board meeting on Monday, May 15th. The administration of the district have already mentioned to us the fielding report and the next steps, and they wanna be able to do that really before the end of the school year. Because this is such a busy time of the year, what I did is asked Dr. Malak to confer with President Cavalluna about that college board meeting date of May 15th. What we're gonna do, instead of having our normal college board meeting on the 15th, we're gonna do a study session that night. Any college business that needs to be brought forward, we brought then to the previous P-12 meeting, so that way we don't have to find another date that works in our calendars. So the intention right now is to do a study session on Monday, May 15th, at 6:00 PM back here, so we can hear the next steps for the 30-year plan. So just be aware of that one, that we will not do a regular college board meeting in May, and we will use that time here, getting in at 6 o'clock to get the next steps.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock. That is the plan. All right, and with that, we can go ahead and adjourn, everyone take care.